I'm going to go ahead and start it with the meeting of the Regional Transportation Commission. And I'll go ahead and turn it over to our CEO, M.J. Maynard.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, members of the board. Your first item on your agenda is to conduct your first citizens' participation period?
This is the first time set aside for public comment. This time is limited to comments on items that are on today's agenda. Those wishing to speak, please step forward to the microphone, state your name for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes. Yep, over here. Yep, hold on there. There we go.
Good morning. My name is Shelley Jones. As I'm here every month, and because the other company, I should say, the other board that took all of our time, they owe us a prime rib dinner. Anyway, I want to comment on the transportation. I know I'm speaking before the CEO gives his or her report. However, I love the program, the pilot program, Silver Ride. Unfortunately, I'm not going to be here because my ride, Silver Ride's picking me up at 10:35. But that is a worthwhile program. I know other people who are on it, and they love it as much as I do. So it needs to be an advid needed program. I like the other programs that run, and thank you very much. Have a great morning.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Anyone else wishing to provide public comment on items on today's agenda? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the first public comment period, and I'll turn it back over to Ms. Maynard.
Thank you, Chairman. The next slide on the agenda is to approve your agenda. It's in order, ready for your approval.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. There's a motion to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. And I do know we have Councilman Wanless on the phone. I don't know if he's able to go ahead and chime in and vote.
I, I, I'm sure, yes, aye.
Thank you, Councilman. All right, then, motion carries.
Thanks, Chairman. The next slide is to receive your CEO report. And last month, we were excited to host two events highlighting federally funded projects. The first featured a visit from U.S. Department of Transportation Assistant Secretary Christopher Coe. His visit helped highlight the almost $6 million raise grant recently awarded to the RTC to study and plan for high-capacity transit on Charleston Boulevard. The day began with a press conference at the UNLV Kirk Corcoran School of Medicine, followed by a bus tour along part of the corridor. Assistant Secretary Coe's visit concluded with a lunch discussion on transit-oriented development, then included various stakeholders. Thank you to our board members and also Congressman Deena Tides for joining us at this important event, and to Las Vegas Acting Public Works Director Joey Paskey for her help in coordinating the event. And just a week later, the RTC unveiled its first two hydrogen-fuel cell electric buses at the UNLV Black Fire Innovation. These vehicles are the first to operate in the state, and were funded with a $3.8 million low or no emission grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation. The grant also provides funding to train staff to maintain and operate the new technology. Special guests included members of the federal delegation, the Nevada Legislature, and RTC board members who attended and celebrated our commitment to a sustainable future. Next, we'd like to present you with an update on the state of our transit system. This is something that we do twice a year. New RTC Deputy CEO Chris Cole will be presenting.
Thank you, M.J. Board members, I'd like to start off with talking about the data in this first chart. That data in the first chart shows the month-to-month comparison of passenger ridership during fiscal year 2023. And of course, over the course of the year, ridership continued to see steady gains. I'm happy to report that overall ridership increased by 21%, nearly $41 million in fiscal year '22 to nearly $50 million in fiscal year '23. Now let's do a layover on this chart of on-time performance. And the on-time performance refers to the level of success of the service remaining on the planned schedule. Many factors can affect on-time performance, including unexpected traffic congestion, detours, weather, or construction. In May and June of 2023, the agency experienced impact due to resort corridor construction projects such as Formula One and others across the valley. Additionally, we were leading up to contract transition from MV and Colias to TransDev. Since last year, we saw a decrease in OTP, or on-time performance, due to the increased passenger loads and some service continuing to operate on Saturday's schedule. We hope the increased frequency and new schedules implemented in July of '23 will increase on-time performance and ultimately improve service reliability to our riders. This slide shows month-to-month fare revenue for all the routes combined during the last fiscal year. March '23 was the highest month in terms of, in terms of fare revenue, topping out at more than $5 million. In total, we collected over $54 million in fare revenue in the fiscal year '23. Here's a fiscal year comparison of our strip revenue beginning in fiscal year '18. We began to see a deep decline at the start of 2020 as a result of pandemic-related closures. However, in fiscal year '23, we continued to experience increased revenue during, revenue due to the return of events, activities, and ridership along the corridor. Although we haven't recognized pre-pandemic revenues to date, we look forward to the potential increase in coming year. Ride RTC, our mobile ticketing and trip planning app, has been downloaded more than 2 million times with more than 44 million scans since we launched the app in September of 2016. In fiscal year 2023, we sold nearly 170,000 passes in Ride RTC, totaling more than 15.4 million in fares. Of course, 82% of our general market were local passes, while 18% were on our strip and all-access passes. In June, we were pleased to begin offering single-ride fares in Ride RTC to the general market and strip passengers. And we're planning to launch contactless payment later this year, where customers can pay with their Visa, MasterCard, credit, or debit cards at electronic validators onboard the buses. RTC passes were also available for purchase in three apps, Transit, Uber, and Lyft. All told, we have sold more than 2.7 million in RTC fares through our three external partners. Also, because of our extreme temperatures here in southern Nevada, that affects our bus operations. We would like to keep the board appraised of summer fleet performance with over 1 million additional miles traveled in fiscal year '23. The number of total road calls increased by 14.5% from fiscal year '22 to '23. Next, I'd like to focus on transit safety, which has been at the forefront of conversation the last several months. The overall number of operator assaults by passengers increased slightly year over year. Just as a reminder for all of us, an assault is defined from anything from spitting to a physical altercation onboard our buses or off our buses. However, passenger-on-passenger assaults decreased by more than 15% going from 196 to 166. But to summarize, the total number of assaults from fiscal year '22 to '23 decreased by nearly 12% from 228 to 201. Keep in mind, while one assault is still one too many. We want to thank the board because during this time period, you provided us additional resources that allowed us to increase the number of contracted officers from 186 officers to 214. And today, we are very close to being fully staffed at 247 contracted officers. We know that the more visible these officers are on our system, it can serve as a deterrent to escalated incidents. Another area of focus for safety and security is our bus stops. While customer trips start where our customer trips started in, presently, there are 3,000, over 3,3695 bus stop locations in the system, and we've installed 1,614 shelters. Over the last year, the focus of shelter installations targeted areas identified in the Southern Nevada Heat Island mapping study. Many of the bus stop locations within the hottest identified areas also face the challenge of being limited to sidewalk installation only. We installed 99 slimline shelters that fit on a standard sidewalk and meets ADA access requirements. A slimline shelter also has solar-powered lighting and provides an additional layer of security in locations with low lighting. We have 51 more to install in Phase 1. We also have installed nearly 300 standalone solar lights at stops and low lighting, low lighting to increase rider visibility and security. Phase 2 is underway, and an additional 1,250 that have been fabricated are in the process of being installed. A third phase will go out for bid this year.
Mr. Cole, can you pull the microphone closer to the other?
In fiscal year 2023, our team also replaced the panel cover, I'm sorry, replaced panel display covers at 1,150 shelters. These panels deteriorated over time, becoming difficult to see through, and are damaged by vandalism. The project will also make ongoing maintenance easier. Advertising revenue from both bus shelters and buses, which pay for maintenance of bus stops, increased by 138%. There are several reasons for significant increase. Closing our contract with Vector Media and receiving a year-end revenue share, beginning a new contract with a current vendor, Outfront Media, which has a higher minimum annual guarantee. Onto paratransit ridership. We remained steady over the last year before seeing more demand starting in March that had, which has continued. Also, in March of 2023, our on-time performance peaked at 91.4%. However, the drop in on-time performance in April can be attributed to the challenges faced by workforce level need, needed for the increased ridership and ongoing supply chain issues impacted on our paratransit fleet. Regarding senior transportation trips, our Silver Star routes and FDR service, we saw a 1.1 increase in the amount of trips taken year over year. The number, number of trips taken on our Veterans Medical Transportation Network decreased by 18.4% year over year since this is a service only for medical appointments and demand fluctuates. At our mobility training center, RTC staff helped train clients to travel more independently throughout our transit system. 481 customers were mobility-trained during fiscal year '23, a decrease of 19.6% since fiscal year '22. This reduction is attributed to decreased referrals from our CCSD partnership, where we have provided free mobility training for students in the CCSD Special Education Program. I'd also like to provide you with an update on our paratransit ride-on-demand program, where a select group of paratransit customers use either Lyft or Tango for same-day service instead of paratransit. This pilot launched in 2018, and as of July of 31, as of July 31st, we have, have 473 active participants who have taken nearly 43,000 rides. This program has saved the RTC roughly $230,000, also significantly reducing wait times and improving service. RTC On Demand officially launched during August of '21 in the southwest and in the West Henderson parts of the valley, where transit service is lacking. RTC On Demand is considered a micro-transit service, which passengers can hail a ride from, from an app, getting picked up in a smaller vehicle, typically a 12-passenger bus, along with passengers in one trip. We are happy to report that in fiscal year '23 has been our highest ridership to date, providing 60,466 trips. In October '21, the RTC partnered with Clark County School District, or CCSD, to provide a public transportation option to high school students at 15 schools. CCSD purchased transit passes from the RTC and distributed them among qualified high school students only. In the first year, students took 150,000 and 606 rides between transit and RTC On Demand. In the '22-'23 school year, CCSD expanded the program from 15 schools to 21. Ride-on participants took nearly 170,000 trips on both our transit and RTC On Demand service. One major benefit of the program is the students are able to use the passes outside of school hours. We're pleased to report that more than 15,000 of the total 177,783 trips were taken outside of school hours to access after-school programs, part-time jobs, and more. This is more than double the trips taken of school, of school hours in the '21-'22 school year. This year, RTC again partnered with CCSD to offer the ride-on program to 21 schools total. Our Game Day Express service to Legion Stadium for Raider, for the Raiders, and also UNLV football games to T-Mobile Arena for, for Vegas Golden Knights games continue to be a very popular service among transit and non-transit riders alike. Our local community can get to all Raider, all Raiders and Golden Knights home games from six convenient locations across the valley for just $2 each way. This has been very successful because our drop-off and pickup locations at both the stadium and the arena are quick and convenient. In fiscal year '23, Raider Game Day Express ridership was 64, over 64,000, and about 3,600 trips more than the previous Raider season. The Vegas Golden Knights Game Day Express ridership topped more than 91,000, which is more than 37,000 trips taken in the previous VGK season because of the playoffs and the Stanley Cup Championship. As the traffic manager for the region, our role is to help mitigate traffic, and if not for the Game Day Express service, more than 100,000 vehicles would have been driven to and from these games in already congested corridors. And we'd like to thank Clark County for the contribution throughout the Office of Stability and Stability. One last thing I would like to say is, I would like to close, I would like to thank all of our union members, bus operators, mechanics, and alike, the contractors, our local partners, and all the staff here at RTC for, for the service that we provide the, the community. And I'm open for any questions.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for Ms. Cole? Councilman?
One real quick. On the paratransit rides, we have 473 current customers, and they've had over 45,000 trips. That's 100 per customer. Does that seem right?
So I think we've got, we've got several programs. So there's the paratransit, the paratransit provided by TransDev, so your traditional paratransit service. And we also provide a partnership with Tango and Lyft, which is the 473 customers that are in that program. And so it, we, because there's different vendors, it's, you'll find different ridership numbers associated with each.
Okay. And then what do we charge Clark County School District for the service we provide for them?
Actually, we, they pay for all the passes. It's totally at their cost. Because they, the students are riding on routes that have capacity, we haven't had to add any extra service, so we haven't had to charge them anything additional.
Councilman Kudus.
Thank you, and great presentation, first time doing it. I think I wasn't here last time, but nice job, because I appreciate that. Two questions. The first one is around in the student count, I think that's just with CCSD. Do we include that with a university partner as well, or is there a program set up for the university or any of the higher education institutions?
We do, yeah, we do, yes. So we have a partnership with UNLV CSN and Nevada State College. They get a deep discount, a 60% discount on semester passes. We've had that program in place for, I think, the last five years.
Thank you. And then maybe a future request, and it's not urgent, I'm just curious, from the CCSD students. Do we track that their engagement with a public transit system leads to future usage of a public transit system, and is there a way to survey them to see where they're going to go? Like, if it impacts, if they're going to buy a car in the future or if they're going to end up riding the bus?
Absolutely. That's a great idea. Because we, again, we, it's anonymized, but we do track, we do know that they're taking, they're using their free passes to utilize the public transit system outside of school hours. So we think we're, we're growing, you know, future riders. But we will certainly ask CCSD to allow us to do a survey.
Great, thank you. Mayor?
Thank you. So how does one access the Game Day Express ridership for the Raiders? Where do you go? How do you do it?
There's, from my understanding, there's, there's locations throughout the area that you can, you can jump on a bus and take you to the stadium.
Yep. So we are, we have specific locations at Red Rock Resort and Spa, at Green Valley Ranch, the Santa Fe Hotel, Casino, at Aliante Hotel and Casino, Samstown Hotel, Casino, and M Resort Spa Casino. So we tried to, we work closely with both the VGK and the Raiders to identify where their ticket season holders live, and that's how the routes were planned. And so they've been the same locations for quite a while now.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Director, did you have a comment? Your light's on, okay. All right. With that, I'll turn it back over to Ms. Maynard.
Thank you, Chairman. Next, I'd like to introduce Andrew Kelman, our Senior Director of the Metropolitan Planning Organization, to present a, our quarterly update on our, what we do at the, as the MPO.
Thank you, M.J. Andrew Kelman, for the record. This morning, I want to provide an update from the MPO specifically about our recently completed travel surveys. Every 10 years, the RTC collects travel data from people who use our transportation system. The data is used to update our region's travel demand model, which is then used as an input as we develop our regional transportation plan. The effort involved three different surveys: a household survey, a transit survey, and then a visitor survey. All three surveys were conducted at the same time earlier this spring. The household survey is RTC's primary source of data about people who live here and use our transportation system. The survey randomly selected households to report all of their trips covering one single day. The goal was to obtain travel data covering all corners of the region and at least 5,000 households. We met that goal by ensuring geographic coverage and having 5,725 households complete the survey. But to meet these goals, we had to reach a much, much wider audience. So first, we randomly selected over 180,000 households from throughout Clark County and encouraged their participation by using postcards, employing social media, developing a project website with a video message from M.J., which was wonderful, and offering incentives. Finally, we developed a mobile app to easily report trips. Respondents to the survey recorded over 41,000 trips. This chart shows the travel mode of various types of trips and the mode used. For work trips, on the far left here, we see that transit service in yellow plays a pivotal role. So while nearly 80% of trips to work were completed by someone driving alone, more than 3% use public transit. And within that 3% number, there's lots of areas of the valley that are much higher, like East Las Vegas and the Strip. They're up, they're up near 6% of work trips. The last thing I'll highlight is the, on the slide, is the orange color, which represents walking trips. While walking comprises just about 2% of overall regional trips, we see how important it is for both shopping and school trips. And the reason for this is because those trips are, tend to be shorter, and so you can walk there. There are also specific areas around the region where walking is more prevalent. And the point of all of this is that this data is now included in our travel demand model as we update our regional transportation plan. The second survey we conducted was the transit survey. So this data helps us better understand who our transit riders are and where they are going. The transit survey actually involved two different types of surveys. There was the first, a traditional survey. The survey asked riders where they were going and if they used any other transportation modes. It also asked socio-demographic questions, and the RTC completed over 15,000 of this traditional type of survey. The second transit survey was an analysis of ons and offs of our buses. And so to accomplish this, the RTC leveraged new emerging technology that matched riders' footwear from where they got on the bus to where they got off of the bus. So in that picture on the slide, you see that little box near the floor of the bus? That captured the rider's shoes. And so this system retained riders' privacy and is much more accurate and efficient than a traditional paper survey. It allowed the RTC to capture accurate on-and-off data from about 38% of our transit riders. And for this type of survey, that is a really high number. This chart shows the race of RTC transit riders. And a few special items of note here are that almost 30% of riders have household incomes below $20,000 per year. Nearly 2/3 of riders are male, and 92% of riders have a smartphone. A final point about transit service is its importance to, is its importance to southern Nevada's economy. 80% of the region's riders are either employed or actively seeking work. But nearly 3/4 of our riders do not have access to a vehicle. So without transit, thousands of employees and essential workers would not be able to get to work. The final survey the RTC conducted was a visitor survey. So to accomplish this, we worked closely with LVCVA, the airport, and private resort properties. Almost 3,000 surveys were collected at tourist locations throughout the region, including the Strip, Downtown, North Las Vegas, Henderson, Boulder, Boulder City, Mesquite, and Laughlin. This slide shows the top five ways visitors travel while they are visiting southern Nevada. A unique aspect of visitor travel is that they often switch between various modes of transportation during their stay. And this is likely because they don't have access to a private automobile, so they're switching modes. Some visitors report using five different modes in a single day. So providing visitors many different options is key. Specifically for walking and transit, they each account for about 14% of overall visitor trips. And so when you combine these two, they account for more than 25% of all visitor trips on walking and transit. And so finally, since we only do these surveys every 10 years, I just want to close with some overall trends that we've observed from 10 years ago. Clearly, some of the decreases that we see are there are fewer trips to work. Clearly, this is due to the increase in number of people working remotely from home. The average trip distance has also decreased. This is likely due to an increase in shopping and eating out, which are usually closer to home. Some of the increases include midday travel. So there's now a midday travel peak, which has ticked up due to telecommuting and running errands during the middle of the day. And trips related to shopping and eating out have also increased, increased a lot. The bottoms, the bottom row of this slide is specific to transit. As we've all observed and know, strip ridership has decreased over the last 10 years, and this is likely due to a few reasons. Visitor volumes overall have decreased due to the pandemic, but they are now coming back. And the introduction of Uber and Lyft captured a significant market share on the Strip. And then in terms of transit increases over the last 10 years, there are more riders without access to a vehicle now. There are also more riders paying for single-use fares compared to our monthly passes. So riders paying for single-use fares is now about 18% of overall trips. So that's about a 10% increase. And so this points to the price sensitivity of our transit customers and the importance of new initiatives like tap-and-go, which allows for our customers to, to purchase single-ride fares for all routes. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Kelman. Questions?
I had a question with regards to the modes of travel by trip purpose. Do we, particularly for work, do we have equivalent data for other similar metropolitan areas so we can sort of compare ourselves and perhaps make goals for improving the, based on those locations?
Yes, Chairman. Yes, we do have that data. And what you see on that mode share split, specifically for work, is we are fairly common with other Sunbelt cities. You'd see a big difference with, like, legacy cities. So you're New York, Philadelphia, Chicago.
Okay, all right. Councilman?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for the presentation. I had a question of, maybe this is more for M.J., but whoever. How do you use the data? What will, if we're to predict 10 years from now, how do we leverage this data to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our
the needs of our community and our visitors?
Sure. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. The key point of this data is that it feeds into what's called our travel demand model. And so this really helps us understand how are, how people move about. And so there's three main components of it. It's the people who live here, the visitors, and the transit riders. And so that's the travel behavior piece. And then the second piece is the land use. And so we work with all of your entities to understand where our region is going to grow, how fast we're going to grow. And then we place that, those people in those areas. And that's how we can inform future travel behavior and kind of understand where the travel behaviors are going to be, where the travel patterns are going to be.
What he said. Exactly. It really is, it is about, you know, because our MPO, they're looking at really, you know, the next 30 years. And so it really is working in with your economic development folks, your public work folks, really understand where they, is it going to be, you know, a single-family home development versus commercial development versus multifamily homes. And then how do you, knowing, knowing that information, knowing that single-family homes, for example, that's going to be more car-centric than a place where you're going to have commercial, you know, shopping, hospitals, libraries, et cetera. And multi, multifamily homes, we expect more transit riders normally just based on what we know. So it's, it's great information.
Good. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Ms. Kelman.
And Chairman, before I close, I do want to recognize, there is a very special person. Her name is Cindy Carter. She's been our Senior Director of Fixed Road Transit. She's been with the RTC for 26 years. She has, her fingerprints are all over the agency. She started as a management, she actually started in the call center, was a management analyst, supervisor, manager, director, senior director. She has, I can't, I can't speak highly enough of her and what she's done for our organization. And today's her last day. So I'd like her to stand up, be recognized.
Let's give her a round of applause.
And that concludes your report.
Very good.
Okay. So the next item is to receive the Nevada Department Transportation Director's report by Tracy Larkin Thomason.
Good morning, everybody. Okay, first thing I just want to, just general knowledge, we have appointed a new Assistant Director of Engineering, Scott Hine. He has been with our department for 23 years. And now in his new position, he was previously the Chief Road Design Engineer, and he now is responsible for Project Delivery Divisions, which include design, engineering, and construction of the contracts. It is, the August, we received 46, well, just under $46 million of federal funding in the August redistribution. This is basically happens every August where the US government re-looks at where the projects, the states that will have obligated all their funds. And then for the ones who haven't, it's redistributed. So it's not new money, but it gives us the authority to obligate additional funds. So in this case, all this money is going to be added to the Henderson Interchange Project down here in Southern Nevada. So just wanted to point out that, yay, $46.9 million. Just kind of reminder, we did have the public hearing on the Downtown Access Project, and that was held on August 29. But it is still, we, the public hearing is still going through Friday till tomorrow. So if you want to say anything or to participate, please get online. And then on the I-15 Charleston work, it is starting this month. Most of the concrete work is expected to be completed this month. And then the major shift is that we'll be shifting to the outside of I-15 in October. So just to be aware of a traffic shift. And then, good news, finally, California has been ready and started to do the travel on the shoulder allowed. This is where the hard shoulder, basically, when you, on Sundays and Mondays, for the return trip to California for our travelers, they can use the shoulder as a third lane. So it's basically relieving some of the congestion on our side. What it really, so as long as they have all the agricultural stations open, it's relieving a fair amount of congestion on there. It did open up on Labor Day weekend. It's a little hard to say on that weekend how successful it was, because that was the weekend of the storms. So there's a kind of a mixed part of the traffic. We will be watching it. We continue to work with them on refining it. Because there was that first trip going out there, a little bit of confusion about people going on the shoulder or stopping and coming back. So we're, we need to work out the kinks. But I guess basically, though, it's moved the pinch point down into California. Last, I know many of you have heard about this before, but we, of course, had the tropical storm Hillary hit. And as you see here, a lot of the devastation that really happened up on the mountain at SR 156, 57, and 58. So as you look around this, we do have an emergency contract out for $8 million to fix and repair SR 156 and 157. And I also want to first give out a big shout out to my crews, but also all of our transportation partners and first responders that were there helping us. As you can hear on the news every morning, there's still just basically one lane in and out. It's for emergency vehicles and residents only. The mountain's still closed. And then in the lower right-hand corner, you can see part of where Deer Run, I'm sorry, Deer Creek Road is on there. That one is still basically where you see, this picture is a little bit dated in that such where you see that area where all the earthwork was gouged out, the roadway has collapsed there. So it is still closed. We are, at this point, truly not completely sure of what our remedy will be. So that one will remain closed for a lot longer. The SR 156 and 157, Kyle Canyon and Lee Canyon Road should be opened up in the early October. And then just to kind of add, because we didn't have enough rain, on the Labor Day one, it's just showing some pictures around, and these are just of I-15 and SR 160 going out to Perump. And I'm really kind of showing this because, as all of you are aware, we've had very unusual winter, a lot of extra moisture. And speaking more on a statewide basis, I have had 34 emergency contracts since the beginning of the year. Only about half of them are complete. I'm looking at a tune of about $60 million spending out on it. We expect to be reimbursed for a good portion of it, but running through the documentation. So the crews definitely have been busy. Obviously, you are all well aware of seeing mainly this shoulder work, but also the impacts to energy, the impacts to the traffic, impacts to just basically everything around the services around the state. So it's just kind of a reminder that now how well we are prepared, Mother Nature can come in and really, really mess with us. Anyway, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Director. Any questions or comments? Seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chairman. The next item on the agenda is to approve your consent agenda, which consists of items five through 43, and can be taken in one motion.
All right. There's a motion to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Great. Next item is consent, excuse me, agenda 44, that deals with our legal issues. There are none to discuss today, so we can move on to your final agenda, which is to conduct your last citizens' participation period.
All right. This is the second time set aside for public comment. Anyone wishing to provide public comment, please step forward to the microphone, state your name for the record, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Good morning. Sandra Adams, Vice President, ATU Local 1637. Before the company was awarded the contract, they came to us and they gave us this bill, all these good things that were going to happen, how we're going to be treated. It was all a lie. Our drivers get treated like trash. They're lied to. They're bullied. We have a problem getting our pay, pay shortages are out of the roof. We get talked to like little kids at dispatch. We call radio for incidents that are happening out there on a bus. They don't answer. We got one dispatch, I mean, one BOC in particular, Lauren Dixon, who we've been having a problem with even from the past company. The dispatcher, I got a call on the way here. Driver come in at 4 o'clock in the morning. They give him a run to 7:00 in the evening. He said, this is too late. I can't do this. Well, you're going home. You got to miss out. They sent him home. He lost a day's pay because of this. There's inconsistencies on deductions coming out of our checks. You might get $200 for your health insurance this month. Next month is $400. It's, it's all over the place. Our scheduler talked to us like we're trash. They, they don't follow the CBA. We file grievances. They forfeit. They don't honor them. I have two that I filed in July that was forfeited on. I have not received a response yet on those. They're taxing our health insurance. I guess that's something new that we're getting taxed on. Our, our pay is taxed upfront. So we pay a percentage of the premium. So they're taxing, they're taxing us on everything. We have incumbent drivers that should have came over July 1st. When they came over, one gentleman was contacted August 8. They said he was suspended. No, he brought all his pay stubs in from Keolis. He brought a certificate of appreciation from Keolis, and he also brought the welcome letter from Transdev. So this man lost a month and a half pay. They don't follow the CBA on anything. They do things the way they want to. Those SDMs, which are the service driver managers, they don't know what they're doing. They treat the drivers like trash. It's just a mess. I mean, if you work, you expect to get paid. We've had pay shortages anywhere from $100 to $700. Then you go and they say next week. No, right now. I'm sure their pay is correct. It's just, it's bad. It's really bad. And, you know, something's got to be done. So if this company want to keep treating us like that, they want to take ATU on, bring it on. We're ready. Because we're not going to allow them to continue to treat our drivers like trash. And that's what we're treated like. We have no respect. There's no trust. I don't trust anybody from the top down to the bottom, because they all lied to us. Thank you.
We appreciate the clapping, but if you could keep, keep, keep away from the clapping, that would be great. Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Starr, and I'm a driver at Transdev. I want to tell you a few things about the company that you hired to run the bus, the bus system. The management is horrible. The Vice President, Kevin Sherbert, is clueless about the day-to-day operations. He defended his division manager, Mandy Williams, for calling me a bitch during a town hall meeting held on 8/16/23 because I expressed concerns about how she does her job. Kevin stated I hurt Mandy's feelings and proceeded to tell me that the service delivery manager, Jackie Alexander, had concerns about Mandy Williams as well. I stated to Kevin, I don't know any, anything concerning that. I'm in your office letting you know what I heard Mandy Williams state about me. Once I knew nothing was going to be done, I contacted my union and did an incident report and contacted the hotline. They say there's an open door policy, but their doors are always closed. When we as drivers ask questions or have concerns, we get attitudes and no answers. I also expressed to Kevin Sherbert, the Vice President, that the SDMs was able to talk and handle all questions and concerns concerning the drivers with Keolis. Kevin stated they are to do whatever the division manager, Mandy Williams, has them to do. I stated, what is that, Kevin? Because Mandy Williams has asked a question or told a concern, she states that she doesn't know. Mind you, that's been our answer since July 1, 2023, once they took over. Forgive me. Mind you, the SDM's positions was created to help the drivers. But from what us drivers see, they're, they're doing everything other than what their position was created for due to their division manager, Mandy Williams. So I ask or want to know, who's there to help us as drivers? Manager wants to know why drivers are calling off. It's because there's no support. They avoid all our questions and concerns or us, period. They want to hold us accountable for everything, but they are not holding themselves accountable for anything. They can't get, get our pay right. And when it's a discrepancy, we have to wait till the next pay period. My bills can't wait. With Keolis, they cut us a check or gave us a prepaid card on site, not Transdev. Also call us are due to people not being relieved on time, like myself. I haven't been relieved on time since they started. They relieve me after two hours or an after, after my shift. Drivers also aren't showing up at all, once again, because they have no accountability. Let's not talk about Azlan Edwards, the Human Resource Manager. She's never around. You might catch her once a week. And when you do, she states she always hasn't met it, or she'll get back to you. And what she never does, she can't call, return a call, nor email. Excuse my French, but it's a straight shit show. It's a circus, and we're just the clowns to show up and act. I'll leave you with this. Things like this happen when you allow a company who got put out the game on the first round to buy their way back in. These are the problems you will have. This is only the beginning. I would hate to see how we will get through the term of the contract. And I mean that with everything in me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is William Lynn. I'm a Las Vegas operator. And you've basically heard everything that's going on. So every meeting we've had, everything they say they're going to do, nothing is done. Yesterday, tried to have a meeting. Simple things. You've got a bus that's running down the street with the bike rack not working. People can't get on the bus because their bike racks broke. Well, we don't have buses. Okay, cool. Why don't you have buses? You have something you can put out there. But more important than that, why not tell that operator? That operator went over 12 hours with a PRTT that never got answered. Called radio on their personal number, no answer. Suddenly, on her last trip while she's sitting up there, guess what happens? They know how to answer. They're like, oh, and the bus has no AC. Well, good thing you didn't die out there. Let's go ahead and bring the bus back. Meanwhile, her relief was in a shuttle car. Both of them drive back to the yard. She red tags the bus, and then they put her back, the driver, back in that bus to go back to the other end. So what'd you miss service for? What was the point in it? You had two people take two pieces of junk cars and a bus back to the yard just so you can miss a whole trip when they were already at the location? The management is, they're not even trying to think about a way to do this. As far as your safety department, you know, the safety department's all over the place. It's like they just sat around and said, hey, you're not qualified to do the job. You're the one I want. You're the one I want. You got a person in the building that's got 30 years of experience doing it in this city, and you haven't never bothered to ask him how he would fix everything that's wrong in your safety department. Besides that, you ask why the drivers ain't showing up to work or why there's so many call-offs. Look at what's going on with them. They're like they said with their paycheck. It's just at a low. It's at a low. You don't never hear nothing but drivers talking about either trying to find another job. This is management, too. Laughing at that, your upper management all over here? Yeah. All day long. Your payroll lady ain't going to do nothing but get an attitude. She ain't going to get an attitude with me. She knows that I'm going to say something, so she going to be nice with me. They aren't going to not answer me. My PRTT gets answered in 20 seconds. Meanwhile, this girl was out on the route. You didn't know what's wrong with her. But you figured it was about that bike rack, so you're just going to leave her alone and not even talk to her for a whole shift? That's insane. You're going to make sure my bus, my bus is either called, go ahead and 1019 to the yard, don't worry, you don't have a relief, or I got a shuttle car waiting. Meanwhile, all these other operators are sitting two hours for it? Don't show me nothing, because I'll still be here talking. I know that you're playing the game with me just so that it doesn't end up here. So that's what it is.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. How are you? I'm here because there was mention of the performance.
Can you state your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Carolyn Higgins. I'm an operator. Once again, we, you talked about the performance, on-time performance. You did not mention maintenance of the buses. We deal every day with bad buses. Not to downplay our brothers that are maintenance, trying to keep the buses up or the equipment up. We have 1,900 series, it's a series of buses, that you literally can go five miles an hour through an intersection, and as well as 18. I've experienced trying to get out to pick up the riders that are trying to get to work on time, and there's been something wrong with the bus. Things that are crucial to our license, lights, signals, brakes, communication, suspension. We have a lot of parts, our intricate parts of the buses, that we are responsible for. And we can lose our license, our commercial license. So when we convey over to the yard supervisors that there is a problem with the bus, we don't need attitude. We only have one maintenance guy out there. Now, the big push is to get the drivers out on time. Get out the gate on time. We can't fix the bus. As I told one of the supervisors, I showed up on time to come to work. I can't be responsible for the bus. He asked me- He asked me to go ahead because I had a bus with no AMDT working. And we have that quite, quite often. That's our radio, our communication. He asked me to go ahead, gave me a new bus. They downed that bus. And then he says, okay, this is what I want you to do. I would like for you to do a brake test, which is important. And then when you get to your layover, you go ahead and do a pre-trip. Now, transportation, I'm sure you guys have heard of what we have to do as commercial drivers. And one thing is safety for the passengers because of the weight of the bus and the size of the bus. And this was a 60-foot bus. And for ourselves. So what happens in between? There are so many incidents. There is a problem. If those buses are not running and putting us across those intersections at five miles an hour, buy new buses. We hear all the money being allocated through here. Buy new buses. If you see a bus leaning, going down the street, find out why. Because it's a crucial, it's, it's, it's not good for the passengers or the drivers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, next speaker.
Hi, everybody. My name is Larissa Seraphin. I've been working now for the company for eight years. And I haven't really been more disappointed. I'd rather take Keolis and the gun situation over this one. I promise you, it's sad. It's really sad. Because there's everything that we have to go through. We have to go through, you know, missing out on money. We have to go through more safety issues. We have to deal with the company transposing calls so we can't get through to call-off, to call-in, you know, get anybody's notice for, give anybody notice for anything. And nobody knows their role. Nobody knows their role. There's so many people that, you know, want to brandish their title, but nobody wants to live up to their title. Nobody wants to assume the responsibility and take accountability for the things that are going on wrong. But everybody's, I can't even say everybody's everyone is right because nothing is right. I don't even think they're out of a probationary period for all these things to be going wrong. Checks have been wrong. You put in a report, people have been fired. Your issues have not been forwarded to anybody that has been replaced in, in their position. You have been, you have people being placed on hold. You have people going on vacation. We don't even have, speaking of vacation time, they have not given us our vacation time for the month of July when they started. We have 20 hours on the books. That's for August and that's for September. They're cheating us. As far as the money is concerned, I thought it was illegal to take a loan out against your employees. I could be wrong, but they can also be sued for it. We are supposed to be paid. We put in our discrepancies. We tell these people, I'm ready to work for y'all. I want to work for somebody that is going to appreciate and pay me for the things that I am doing. I want to ask maybe if you guys can supersede them. We're not getting our just due at all. We're coming with the same complaints every time. It's irritating. It's tiring. Nobody wants to keep going through it, let alone keep hearing it. So I'm just asking if somebody can stick up for us over them. Because I don't know what, I don't know what they're doing. I don't even know why they're here. I'm just irritated and I don't like them. Sorry.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Frederica Henderson. I'm a bus operator. On August 30th of this year, I was assaulted by a passenger. I was traveling northbound Boulder Highway at Russell. A guy appears to walk on the bus and he's bloody. His hands are bloody, his face is bloody, and his shirt is bloody. As I follow RTC protocols and policy, he cannot transport on a bus with open lesions or blood. He asked if he can get a courtesy ride. I denied it. He ended up going to the back of the bus. I got on a microphone. I told everybody at the bus without a service. He then walks to the seat behind me, takes out a knife, and starts cutting his throat. Immediately, I called 311. I also called dispatch. Dispatch did not answer the phone. I was left out there. The man gets off the bus. He throws a rock at me. He throws the knife and the knife hits my cheek. At this point, no call from dispatch. So police comes out, they arrest him. I pressed charges and I currently have court Tuesday. I've got a subpoena sent. I have not heard from HR. I have not heard from the safety manager. And I went to workers' comp. After I went to Concentra to get a blood-borne pathogen, and workers' comp tried to put me on workers' comp for four hours. Told me I can only work from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And that's all I was going to get. As far as dispatch, dispatch is horrible. They don't answer the phone. I was out there for at least 15 minutes before I got a call. When I got back to the yard, I was told that the power had went out and that they were also training another dispatcher. So I had another incident Sunday where a guy was at the layover with me on Boulder Highway. He refused to get off the bus. I called dispatch. Dispatch did not answer the phone. Instead of them answering the phone, they sent me a message saying, radio has received your message. When I hit the call button again, I got the same message. Radio has received your message. I called 311. Henderson Police came and removed her individual off the bus. So I'm sitting up here at the layover with no security and nobody is sitting there to help me. I have to go back there and wake this man up. So if I turn my back, who's to say he's going to throw anything at me? Who's to say he's going to hit me on the back of my head? I got two children to go home to. So once dispatch decided to call, probably about, I want to say eight minutes after that, I asked who I was speaking to. And it was Lauren Dickens. And I asked her, was she the one that sent those messages over to AMDT? Her response was, I'm doing my job. After she said that, I said 10-4, thank you. Didn't even respond back to her. I haven't had no kind of help from any safety manager or anybody there. I had to speak to my union rep and her and I went back there Monday at around 11:00 a.m. There was no safety manager, no HR, and there was nobody there to help us, not even the scheduling manager. Mind you, I've been taken off the schedule since this happened. So I've been having to come in every day to take over my run. It's ridiculous. There's no, there's no communication at all.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name's Tanisha Tatum Watson. I am the executive board officer for ATU Local 1637. I just would like to comment on the private contractor transition. It's not going well. And I'm making this comment, I believe, on behalf of all of our collective bargaining employees. We at the IBMF location did not think any company could get worse than MV. But Transdev, since day one, cannot get our paychecks right. Probably 50% of the employees have payroll discrepancies every payday. We have to wait on our money. There are many discrepancies in the scheduling department. We don't even have a scheduler at the IBMF location. So, you know, we have over 1,000 employees. You can't just have two schedulers with that many employees and they're all at the SMF location. We need a scheduler at our location. We have no one to talk to there. Now, I was here at the last meeting last month and the CEO said that she was looking forward to working well with the union. That's not happening. That is not happening. They have several forfeitures on grievances. They're not working well with us at all. It took us five meetings just to negotiate a memorandum of understanding and they're not abiding by it. I don't have any optimism on negotiating a fair contract with this company. You know, we, we as the operators and the mechanics, we moved this city and we deserve more. So at some point, we're going to have to do whatever we got to do to get what we deserve by any means necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Terry Richards. I am the president of ATU 1630 Local 1637. Every time I do this, I come here with a prepared speech. And before I get a chance to say what I want to say, all of my members have already told you what's going on. I won't say, I won't go as far as to say that Transdev is not trying to work with us. But they're not trying. They are kind of trying. Let me put it that way. Because I don't want to discredit somebody that is trying to do their job. But there are too many discrepancies. I sit here, like Carolyn said, you tell us how much money you bring in for this project and that project. There's never any money allocated that we see when we come to these meetings just for the bus system. Roadways, this, that. We working with inferior equipment. You put this, you put Transdev in. I understand they bought out First Transit, but now they're here and they hired the same people that we came, that we've been coming here for a year to complain about. All of those people are working there. I don't want anybody to lose their job. But if you are, if I have a company, I don't see how you could work a company where you pay more out in discrepancy pay than it seems you pay out in regular payroll every payday? That should not be happening. You blame everything on either the driver. We come here, we've been coming here for a while. There are people here that I know. I know MJ personally. I've had dealings with Ms. Goodman when Francis was here. I respect this committee. It seems like what I really wanted to do, I wanted to come here and say thank you for bringing these people in. And thank you for showing us that you sit here, you nod your head, you act, you, you make it, make us feel like you're listening to what we're saying? Nobody's listening. Or, let me correct myself. Maybe you're listening, but you don't hear. Because there's too much going on now. It's been since July 1st. This is almost four months. I've been in transportation for 40 years. When I got my first job, it was working at a candy store. And that one man with his candy store ran it way better than what's being done now. It's no way you could have so many people in each of your departments that are supposed to take care of things and everybody's answer is, I don't know, ask the union. I don't run your payroll department. I don't run your HR system. Can I help my people go somewhere where they can get the help they need? Yes, but why should they have to? So what I feel like is there's too many chiefs, not enough Indians. Until stuff goes wrong, then everybody is an Indian.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. My name's Kevin Schubert. I'm the vice president. Good morning. My name's Kevin Schubert. I'm the vice president of Transdev. I just want to share I'm deeply concerned with what I've heard. I have heard some of these complaints. I'm sorry that they feel like they need to come here to do that. And I'm committed to making sure, and I know Transdev's committed to making sure that we rectify this. So I apologize. I want you to know we're committed to this and we'll resolve this. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm not going to get into a dialogue because it's not the appropriate forum, but we're paying you a lot of money, so do better. Next speaker.
My name's Kenneth Lewis and I was a driver for Transdev. I got assaulted on a 212 bus by a passenger. He, he proceeded to rip the, the safety shield off and he proceeded, he proceeded to try to stab me. I defended myself with a pen that I have in my hand. And I was terminated because I brandished a weapon while being stabbed by somebody on my bus. So I was terminated for this pen that I have in my hand. Have a good day.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. Lauren Skyver, COO, Maintenance, Rail, Safety and Security for Transdev. Mr. Commissioner, I understand, Mr. Chair, your comments. And I understand the, the task that we have in front of us. We must do better. We must do better for the RTC, for CEO Maynard, and these folks that were here today. I'm committed to being here and I am going to be here to help Kevin and his team and to help us improve our performance. I've heard what was said today and I understand it's real. And it's time for us to take action to do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else pushing to provide public comment?
Sorry, guys, I had to come back.
If you've already spoken, then the time's up for that. You don't get to speak twice.
So I can't come back again?
Nope. Next speaker.
Oh, okay. That, that was great.
All right. Everybody gets an equal three minutes. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Michelle Com and I'm a current coach operator for Transdev. I went through Veolia and Keolis and I'm with Transdev. I consider myself to be prideful of my job. And I was assaulted on July 12th. I was making relief. I was off the bus. And I brought all my things off the bus with me. And it was a homeless lady. And she said that I killed her kids in New York. That's what I done to her. She said she was going to beat me up. Which she did. She said she was gonna beat me up, which she did. Everybody's like, "You weren't beat up." Yes, I was. She pulled my hair, I went to the ground, I hit my back. My back went out, she got on top of me, punched me in my face several times. I was assaulted very, very badly, to the point where I could not walk. When I finally got to Concentra, I didn't know I lost my vision in my right eye. I couldn't read. I didn't know I couldn't read until it was time for me to read. My back is hurt. They put me on light duty, which is from 8:00 in the morning to 12:00 in the afternoon, but I got no other compensation. I did not ask to get beat up. And the safety department manager chose to talk about my situation in a safety meeting, which violated my disability rights, because nobody should have known what happened to me on that bus, except for me and the company. I did not post it on Facebook. I did not post it on any type of social media, but everybody knew. They called me, they let me know, "They're talking about you in the safety meeting, and it's your fault that you got assaulted." It's not my fault, I did not go to work to be assaulted, I did not go to work to miss pay. I did what I was supposed to do, I drove for 10 hours, and my, ended my shift, I had to call 911 to get help, because I was unable to reach TransDev BLC department. And what I'm, what I'm getting to right now is that I'm sent to Concentra, they're giving me over-the-counter medication, I'm back to work 100%, but I'm not 100%. My leg is going out while I'm driving, because I cannot afford to be out on disability, because I get no compensation, and my rent is $2,200 a month. So therefore, I cannot stand to be off work with no compensation. So, yes, they do need to do better, maybe they need to get a better insurance company, or something needs to be done to help people that's being assaulted. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
You know, Ron Williams, Shav Stewart, y'all know me. I'm not even gonna hold this up, but y'all have heard these conversations, y'all heard everything all my drivers said. We said this for months and months, and I told you, MJ, I said, "We're ticking time bombs. Y'all might want to get a hold of this," because I'm, I'm telling you, I'll be the first one to lose it. And I pray to God that none of them have to go through what we go through mentally. We don't have nobody, I preached them a long time ago, and I'm not gonna just dog TransDev. Well, I will say this, though. We asked them to have somebody mentally there for us. When I get off my bus and I had a bad day, somebody needs to be right there and say, "Hey, Ron, how you doing? Just come talk." They letting us go home with ticking time bombs. I'm telling you, y'all about that close from we making the news in the wrong way. Y'all better figure it out.
All right, we're gonna go up to the top.
Good morning. Dorothy Barnes. I came to make a complaint that I filed online, and after hearing these people, I just want to invite them to sign this promissory note. I got a multimillion-dollar punitive damage class action lawsuit pending, and I said, "Lord, if you bless me, I'll bless your people." You can go on Nellis Outlaw Space, find out how to sign this promissory note. An attorney looked at it, said, "You got a sure case punitive damage class action suit damages to your health and reputation." And I want to share it. I don't want all that money in Swiss bank accounts where nobody can get to it when I die, and I don't want it just for my family, but this is family here, too. I want to see unity in the driving community. So that's what I want to tell these people, sign this promissory note. But what I was here to complain about, I went online, two months ago, I think, the line that's going on on the buses. They're trying to keep my name from being removed off this program to keep me from getting this lawsuit. They put people on the bus, sometimes they crowd the bus out. These people can't come forward and tell this, because they in the secrecy. They make them lie on me. They lie on me, I'm already on a rollator, accidentally fell and broke a bone in my knee. That's bad enough, they lied me into poor health and devouring me for income. I don't want people to kill me for income. I want to help people. I want to not have them put people on the bus, order people to ride the bus, to lie on me. It goes on every day, every route. I rode buses for three days once, I was so dog tired. Last night, I got a ticket from the Henderson Police Department. I was so tired, I'd sit down on water screen and sleep, and this is a charge, Dorothy was sleeping on a public bench. That's my charge, I gotta go to court next month. I'm saying this to say this, the police are being, I lived in Henderson one year in Espinoza Terrace, apartment 11D, and I lived up there one year during Mayor Haffin, former Mayor Haffin was mayor, then when Mayor Deborah March was mayor. I lived one year in Espinoza Terrace, and I'm on the waiting list for housing now, because I can't afford to pay Monta-Monta hotels. The line that's going on to keep my name from being removed off this program is outrageous. I'm lying on, they overload me with so many lies, if I don't ride the bus or something against them, sometime it's true. These people kill me. They just can't lynch me, you know, hang me in a tree, it's illegal to just hang people in trees, but I feel like I'm hanging in a tree now. Somebody cut me down. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else willing to provide public comment? Seeing none, then we'll go ahead and close. Sir, are you coming down for public comment?
Well, hello there. How's everybody going? I see that you have a lot of problems here.
If you could, I know we heard from you before, but can you please state your name again?
My name is Christ Nimrod, N-I-M-R-O-D, Nimrod. Oh, and okay, congratulations, board, and to the executive team, you're doing a great job. What I'm about, what I'm talking about is the intersection on Tropicana and University Drive. I call it the international gateway to Las Vegas, because from the airport comes all the traffic down University Center Drive, or either they turn left and go up Tropicana. But my concern is this intersection. Now, when I get off the bus, 201 at stop ID 2851, now don't hold me to that, because I think it's 2851, but the bus, the ID, the bus stop is not my concern. My concern is the intersection. Now, when I'm standing on the northwest corner, waiting to cross the street, across University Center Drive to the northeast corner, there's no light telling me to walk or don't walk. So I have to use my judgment as to when all this traffic is gonna stop, and then I make my, then I make my way across. That shouldn't happen. Now, I wrote INDOT, and I told them about this in July. They said that I should contact the Clark County Public Works. So I called Clark County Public Works, July, July 12th, and a young lady named Jamie said that her supervisor, Brian, said they don't do concrete work, which is needed to replace the light. Now, there's a light, but there's no sign telling me when to walk or don't walk. There was one there, but as there was an accident and they didn't replace that walk/don't-walk sign. I was told one contractor backed out, and the contractor they have now won't be able to do the work for seven months or longer. Now, that's a very dangerous intersection. That intersection should be dealt with, because it's the international gateway to Las Vegas. And if somebody is lying dead in that intersection, or there's a great big accident in that intersection, that won't look good for Las Vegas. And I hope when that accident happens, I hope no accident happens.
Thank you, Mr. Nimrod.
And I hope that I'm not the one that is involved in the accident.
We don't want that either. We'll follow up with you at Public Works.
Okay, so now, I've made it known, and now it's known on TV and everything.
Yep, thank you. Anyone else wishing to provide public comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the second public comment period, and we are adjourned. Thank you.